All right, good evening. We're going to get started. Welcome to the June Hoboken Board of Education meeting. We're starting a little early tonight as we have a full agenda. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 7, 2023, and June 10, 2023. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and FiOS Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Katamatory.
Here.
Mr. Delatorre.
Here.
Mr. Grana.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Cluffel.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Here.
Ms. Norwood.
Here.
Mr. Kerian.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, well, first we'll be going into executive session for the first purpose of discussing personnel items and items covered by attorney-client privilege. We will be approximately one hour. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatory.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Mr. Grana.
Yes.
Ms. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel.
Yes.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. Norwood.
Yes.
Mr. Kerian.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
You're in closed session in 604.
Welcome, everyone, to our June Hoboken Board of Education meeting. We're so happy to have all of you here, and we look forward to celebrating our wonderful students tonight. We have two months of student recognition, so we will get started, and I will turn the meeting over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez. Oh, my goodness, okay, sorry. Sorry about that. We started a little bit early tonight as we had some items to discuss in executive session, so it's a little bit of a different process. But it is 7:06, and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatory.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Mr. Grana.
Yes.
Ms. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel.
Yes.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. Norwood.
Yes.
Mr. Kerian.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Okay, now I will turn the meeting over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
Welcome to the final month of the academic year, the great month of June. June is a month dedicated to reflection and introspection. As students and educators, we will remember all that was learned and shift priorities as needed to continue to excel into the new year. June is also dedicated to honoring, acknowledging, and celebrating members of the LGBTQ+ community who strive for peace and equality in their lives and in the lives of their fellow community members. Additionally, we're looking forward to honoring and commemorating the legacy of Juneteenth on Monday, June 19. Juneteenth recognizes and reminds our fellow Americans of the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans. We remain committed to the representation and honoring the lived experience of our entire community. When we say we educate and reach all, we mean all. I am delighted to bring greetings to all in attendance and a warm welcome to the members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, community members, students, and their special guests this evening, their families. In a few minutes, I will be introducing our talented principals, and they will take the podium to share detailed information and wonderful anecdotes about the students being honored here this evening. Tonight, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of our students who are being celebrated as Students of the Month for both the months of May and June. You will hear about unrelenting effort and powerful results. These students were driven to succeed, and their efforts have certainly paid off. We are so very proud of each of you and can't wait to hear about your current academic journey and your plans for the future. Tonight, we will first hear about our May Students of the Month. Then after, we have a special presentation by Hoboken High School's GSA, and the GSA will be introduced by the Hoboken Principal when it is her time to take the podium.
We will begin, Charles is your person?
Okay. So we usually begin with the Joseph F. Brandt School, but tonight, as we wait for his May Student of the Month, we will begin with the Connors School, and Principal Addy will join me at the podium, and she will introduce Vice Principal Lawrence, Principal Sorefin, Principal Pica-Pietra, and then finally, Principal Bartlett of Wallace Hoboken Middle School and Hoboken High School respectively, Brandt, of course. Each will celebrate their school's selection and then pause for a picture opportunity. I would remind principals that the students will be to your left. Again, thank you for being with us here this evening, and with that, I would ask Principal Addy to come to the podium.
At this time, I would like to call up Lynn J. Murray, the Connors' May 2023 Student of the Month. We could not be more proud of Lynn J. Murray. Lynn J. is a third-grade student in Ms. Arciero's homeroom. Lynn J. is a persistent, eager learner who comes to school prepared to learn as much as she can every single day. Lynn J. has exhibited so much positivity this year. Her optimism radiates off of her, setting an example for her classmates around her. She has incredible character and always thinks of others. Lynn J. is also a star cheerleader on the Hoboken Cheer Dynamics cheerleading team. She has done an exceptional job transferring skills she learns on the cheerleading team from the gym to her classroom, such as leadership, determination, and confidence. Lynn J. is sure to be at every school celebration, leading her team, and cheering on her Connors' koala family. You can often find Lynn J. in the classroom, being the first to volunteer to read aloud to her classmates, or adding her answer to the board to showcase her ideas. You can always find her contributing to a class discussion or curiously asking questions. Lynn J. is also excellent at offering a helping hand, never hesitating to partner up with someone around her and teaching them the steps to solve a problem. Lynn J. wants to be a nurse when she grows up because she has so much empathy and compassion for others and always looks to make everyone feel better. When we asked Lynn J. how she felt about being Student of the Month, she shared that she was proud of herself for working so hard. We could not be more proud of the growth and heart Lynn J. has shown in her third-grade year. She has stepped up to the plate with every challenge and excelled at everything she has tried. Lynn J., we are so excited to see you continue to soar, and we will be cheering you on every step along the way. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to call up Liz Lawrence, the Vice Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
I'm honored to call to the podium Ethan Barrer, our Wallace School Student of the Month for We are here tonight to celebrate Ethan as our Wallace School Student of the Month. Ethan was nominated by his first-grade teacher, Mrs. Burns. In her nomination, Ms. Burns shared the following. I have had the privilege of not only watching Ethan grow academically, but also getting to know him as a person. What I have learned is that Ethan is a hard worker who values his education and is incredibly kind and respectful to everyone he meets. He has earned outstanding grades each marking period due to his focus, rigor, and drive. No matter the subject, Ethan puts 100% effort into his work. His ability to listen, learn from his mistakes, and take constructive feedback is excellent. One example of Ethan's drive is his motivation to always do and learn more. You can often hear him ask questions in class, such as, "Can I write 10 more sentences in my journal?" Or, "Is it okay if I answer 10-word problems instead of five?" On the spring DRA III, he scored a 28, which is well above grade level, and much of this accomplishment is due to his love of reading and his dedication to understanding key details. These characteristics are what also make him a strong writer. As a scholar, Ethan is liked by his peers and works well with others in centers and projects. Ethan's achievements, though, go beyond this recognition tonight. During Wallace's quarterly academic pep rallies, he received awards for outstanding attendance and extraordinary effort. He also embodies all of our roar characteristics, especially respect. Ms. Burns went on to share that one of the most redeeming qualities about Ethan is how he addresses everyone with the same level of politeness and always says please and thank you. Outside of school, Ethan has many hobbies. He loves soccer and basketball and can often be seen wearing jerseys. Cooking is another interest he has and is always in the kitchen making his own breakfast of eggs and toast. However, Ethan's biggest passion is his love for art. He is gifted with a creative imagination and the ability to make his ideas come to life. Some of his most notable artworks include a clay character model, a soccer portrait album, and detailed drawings. These qualities shared, and many more, make Ethan an asset to the classroom, a wonderful friend, and, most importantly, the best big brother to Logan. Ethan, we have really enjoyed watching you grow this year. Continue being yourself, and you will do great things in this world. Please join me in congratulating Ethan, our Wallace Student of the Month for May. I'll now turn the meeting over to Mr. Sorefin, Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. Please welcome to the podium Hoboken Middle School's Student of the Month, for May 2023, Vincent is a seventh-grade student at Hoboken Middle School as an integral part of the proud Tigers in Ms. Rosmester's homeroom. Ms. Rosmester nominated Vincent due to his outstanding performance this year. He always puts in 110% into everything he does. She can always count on him to have his hand raised, ready to share his insightful thoughts. Vincent is also always willing to lend a helping hand to anyone who needs it, whether it is a pair or staff member. He is a positive role model, diligent student, and good friend. Monthly, he has earned the top spot or top-three spot in Ms. Rosmester's class dojo. She has really enjoyed having him in her ELA classes here. He is responsible, respectful, and inquisitive young man who brightens up the classroom with his witty sense of humor. Ms. Mendoza shares that Vincent is an active participant in physical education, he is open to trying new activities, and inspires his fellow classmates to try and give effort as well. Vincent is a great athlete himself, as I have seen him in dance and physical education alike. He was voted by his peers as best offensive player of the floor hockey unit. His classmate Nikolai describes Vincent as funny, caring, and an intelligent person. Mr. English, his social studies teacher, also describes Vincent as having a great sense of humor that brightens up the room. He shares that Vincent is kind and outgoing and just a pleasure to have in class. One of Vincent's best friends, Thomas, describes Vincent as hardworking and determined. Thomas states that Vincent is genuine, cares about everyone, and will never leave your side. Currently, Vincent is a student ambassador for Hoboken Middle School. He takes CTY courses. He is part of the academic team, and he participates in many other clubs and extracurricular activities. During his free time, Vincent enjoys playing and watching sports such as basketball, hockey, baseball, and especially soccer. He even wrote his photo essay on the World Cup. When asked how it feels to be Student of the Month for May, Vincent says, "Feels cool. It's been a good school year, and it feels great to be recognized by my teachers." Next year, Vincent will be an eighth-grade Tiger, and the Hoboken Middle School is very excited for all the wonderful accomplishments that lay ahead for Vincent. Congratulations on this well-deserved achievement. Please join me in a round of applause for the Hoboken Middle School Student of the At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Pica-Pietra, the Principal of Hoboken High School, to the podium.
It is my pleasure to congratulate Jaylene Mallette, Hoboken High School Student of the Month for May. But unfortunately, she can't join us this evening, but I wanted to read a little bit about her. Every day for the past two years, I have noticed Jaylene coming in early with her best friend, Justino. She is always a breath of fresh air and greets you with a good morning. Over the past two years, I have seen such a tremendous amount of growth, and I am extremely proud of her. I am not the only one. I will share what her teachers had to say about her. Ms. Melinda said, "Jaylene is one of a kind. She has been a constant source of positivity in my classroom for the past two years. I love having Jaylene in class because she is so unique and curious. She loves to learn new things and apply them in her life and that of others. She is creative and smart, a wonderful combination, especially in ELA classes. Jaylene is a great writer because she has high emotional intelligence, plus she always loves to lend a helping hand whenever needed." Ms. Patel also shared she's a highly motivated student and always gives her 110% in everything she does. Whether it's completing an assignment, participating in lab, or engaging in class activities, she is always there to lend a helping hand. Mr. D. Benedetto had the same to say. She's a picture of consistency, always on time, always involved in discussion and activities, and always turning in thoughtful work. Aside from being a helpful classmate, she taught me how to solve the Rubik's Cube. And Mr. McKenzie shared he has known Jaylene since the fourth grade. Her demeanor and her quest for learning is something that she has never wavered. She enjoys learning and is always willing to delve deeper into the material when presented with the opportunity. Jaylene is a regular on our high school honors honor roll with a GPA of over four and not one grade below 93 for the entire year. She is definitely a quiet powerhouse, and we are very proud. I am confident she will continue to grow, and I look forward to seeing the outcome. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the mic Principal Bartlett.
Thank you, Principal Pica-Pietra, and good evening, everyone. I'm always telling my staff and students to go with the flow, so I appreciate all of you going with the flow tonight. I just want to give my May student a couple more minutes to get here, so I'm going to actually welcome my June student up to the podium. I'd like to ask Aleah Rosario to come join me. Congratulations to Aleah Rosario, our Joseph F. Brandt School Student of the Month for June 2023. Aleah was nominated by her fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Faruk. Mrs. Faruk said she nominated Aleah for displaying a positive attitude for academics throughout the year, being kind to her peers, and showing respect for the school, adults, and classmates. Aleah is a phenomenal member of our class who takes pride in fulfilling all the academic and social responsibilities, Mrs. Faruk said. She continued to say Aleah is a conscientious student who takes long-term goals seriously and deliberately makes choices to meet them. Mrs. Faruk said that while Aleah is a very shy and quiet student, she knows when it is the right time to speak. As principal, I can certainly agree with that. When Aleah contributes, her words carry a strength with them. Aleah is an asset to school because she seeks new challenges and enjoys learning new material. She is a dependable and considerate student who shares great insight during class. She consistently makes behavior choices which are exemplary to her peers and will jump at all opportunities to support her classmates in any way. One of Aleah's favorite hobbies is drawing. This school year, she was recognized as a top-25 elementary school artist during the PATH Hoboken Public Schools Summer Art Contest. She said, "Drawing is a creative outlet that allows me to express my feelings and emotions. She also enjoys skateboarding and practices weekly to sharpen her skills." Aleah added, "In my free time, I enjoy playing video games with family and friends, and in school, I find science to be exciting and mesmerizing." When told she would receive this award, Aleah said, "I never thought I would get the award of being the school Student of the Month. When I heard the news from Mrs. Faruk, I was thrilled and couldn't wait to share this exhilarating news with my mom. My heart felt happy inside and out. I feel proud because only a few people get this award per year, and I would like to thank everyone who helped me along the way to receive this precious award, such as Mrs. Faruk, my family, Mrs. Delafave, and Mr. Bartlett." In turn, I would like to thank you, Aleah. We've all enjoyed watching you grow as a fourth grader, and I honestly cannot think of a better student to represent our learning community one last time this school year. Please join me in congratulating Aleah Rosario, our Brandt Student of the Month for June
Good evening again. So I'm really thrilled to be able to invite Ms. Courtney Martinez to the podium because last week during the Pride flag raising, we were treated to some extraordinary work by some extraordinary students. And I'm thrilled, Mr. Cluffel and I believe Ms. Kerian were there to recognize and said, "We really need to have this brought to the Board event and give these students the opportunity to share the work and the community," because it's fabulous. And I want to welcome a lot of our GSA members here this evening. But without further ado, Ms. Courtney Martinez.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for this. My name is Lorna Courtney Martinez, and I am a teacher at Hoboken High School. On June 1, like many years prior, we raised the rainbow flag in honor of inclusivity and remembrance on the first day of June, the first day of Pride Month. The only difference is that it was my very first time as advisor for the GSA club. And I must share with all of you, I am beyond honored to work with such an amazing group of young people. So after listening to the reading and the poetry shared at the flag raising, two board members, Melanie Kerian and Thomas Cluffel, asked if we could share the readings with our community at the next board meeting. I would like to share with our awesome community here in Hoboken. As a teacher, a mother of an actual Hoboken High School graduate many years ago, and a 38-year-old resident, we in GSA are so grateful for the support of the members of the Board, Mrs. Pica-Pietra, Mr. Munoz, and the many families of our students in GSA and in Hoboken overall, but especially our Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez and Dr. Christine Johnson, who over the years has cultivated a very meaningful, inclusive, and supportive environment, allowing our students in this district to thrive. I'm going to invite up a few of the students now. First will be Angel Barrigan.
Hopefully, you didn't see that fall. Good afternoon. Well, it says people at Hoboken High School, but this is a people at Hoboken High School. Good afternoon, people of Hoboken. I am Angel Barrigan. When we think of gay, we think of a rainbow flag. But do you know why the term gay is associated with this flag? Because a great man named Gilbert Baker, he felt that we needed something to express our joy, our beauty. Exactly, thank you. Our power. And the rainbow did that. Preach. We're an ancient and wonderful tribe of people. We pick something from nature. We pick something beautiful. This flag was adapted further by Julio Fielas, creating the New Progress Flag, showing the LGBTQIA+ community and its ever-growing group, supports people of color, people who identify as transgender, and people who identify as and/or intersex. These colors on the Pride flag are red, representing life, orange, representing healing, yellow, representing new ideas, green, representing prosperity, blue, serenity, violet, spirit, black/brown as people of color, and white, pink, and white, blue, and pink representing the trans community. I like to think of the LGBTQIA+ as a rainbow. Separately, we're each a stripe. We hold a lot of strength individually, but together, as a community, we form something beautiful. The LGBTQIA+ community is a group of people bonded by our differences to form something beautiful and powerful. As the Don't Say Gay law was passed in Florida and other states are enacting similar laws trying to suppress the LGBTQIA+ community, it's important for us to stick together as a community, most importantly, as a family. In a world that's forever growing and changing, we must stand together in the face of suppression, for the fight cannot be won until we're allowed to be who we are to our fullest extent. I want us to say that I have been in the GSA community for two years, in the GSA club for two years now. I didn't have anything like this in my old middle school because I'm from Jersey City Heights. It is absolutely beautiful to see a community and to see a club that works so hard to strive to allow each other to grow as a person, to grow as a community, to grow to our fullest extent. If you look at life like a garden, Hoboken overall has helped me blossom into somebody who I never thought I was going to become, and has helped me identify an identity that I never would have thought I found. Hoboken High School in particular has proven that they are the most accepting community I could possibly imagine. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm reading a poem from Langston Hughes, and it's called "My People." "The night is beautiful, so are the faces of my people. The stars are beautiful, so are the eyes of my people. Beautiful also is the sun. Beautiful also are the souls of my people." That's it.
Hi, my name is Mary Claire McGreevey, and I'm the president of the Hoboken High School GSA Club. I'd like to thank the members of the school board for allowing our club to speak at this meeting. It is truly an incredible opportunity to have our voices heard. Today, I'd like to remind you of the history of Pride Month. Since Pride Month was officially recognized by President Bill Clinton in nineteen ninety-nine, the month's become more and more ubiquitous, with every coffee shop putting up rainbow decorations, every retail store rolling out a rainbow-themed clothing line, and every corporation slapping on a rainbow-themed logo just for this month. On the one hand, the widespread recognition of Pride Month across America leads to more visibility for the LGBTQ movement. However, today, I'd like to show you that Pride Month is not just the rainbow logos and t-shirts that you see today. This month has had a long and meaningful history, one marked with oppression victories, with ignorance and recognition. The tradition of June's Pride Month, the tradition of June's Pride marches began after the Stonewall riots of June nineteen sixty-nine, when members of the gay community fought back against the police raids of lesbian and gay bars in Greenwich Village, New York City. This uprising propelled the gay liberation movement to national attention, with organizers holding Pride marches in the following June in major cities across the country. The first Pride parades didn't have the support they have today, though. Organizers received death threats simply for staging a march down Hollywood Boulevard, but they didn't give up. They continued to show the world that queer people were not going to hide away from the world. They would make their voices heard until the government and the people of the United States would agree to listen. Although national recognition of Pride Month has grown in size, demonstrations themselves have become more subdued and tame over the years, the movement often being reduced down to rainbows and service-level acceptance. Today, on behalf of the Hoboken High School GSA, I call upon you as the Hoboken Board of Education to remember where this movement started. Remember the triumphs, but don't forget the struggles. Appreciate the rights which the queer movement has fought for today, but acknowledge the long and tumultuous struggle we fought to gain those rights. And most of all, never stop fighting for respect, for yourself, for your friends and family, for total strangers, and especially for the students of our district, not just during the month of June with rainbow decorations all around, but throughout the whole year. Thank you.
And lastly, with a original written poem, Michelle Puhari.
Oh, whoa, that's loud. Okay, hi, my name is Michelle Yanali Puhari. I'm a proud member of Hoboken High School's GSA, and today I will be reading a poem that I wrote myself specifically for the flag raising, but now I will be reading it to you guys. Okay, my poem is called "All I See Are Rainbows." All I see are rainbows. They're in my eyes, my hair, they're everywhere I turn, and I so desperately want to share. Every color is up to spare. Red, for the color of love, acceptance, and hatred. Orange, a beautiful sunset sprinkled with support and stupidity. Yellow, meant to embrace those bright light rays that beam out hope and happiness, but just a tiny bit of egotism. Oh, how I wish to spread these wondrous colors across valleys of people, but just like you and me, there's a downside to these rainbows I see. Green, the iridescent algae sparkling of growth and new beginnings in an ocean of judgmental people. Blue, like the clear skies we enjoy after a foggy week of cold and unfriendliness. Purple, a blossoming flower that springs out dreamy petals of power and nobility, but then you realize it releases a poisonous gas that reeks of frustration and arrogance. I love me. I want to be me. I am me. But why does me bother you? What have I done that makes you shun me? Why can't you just accept and move on in peace? What aggravates you to hate crying me? What if I said that causes your rage to burst into flames? You take action, but I suffer the consequences. All I wish is to spread these rainbows I see, to color in your world of gray seas filled with the tears of the unhappy, but I'm afraid of what you'll do to me. I wish I could say all that's to fear is public humiliation, but that's not the case. We both know it doesn't stop there. People kill the me's everywhere. I aspire to spread my colorful dream, to set us free. Let us live in a world where you and me aren't a concept of prey and predatory, but a metaphor of how it rained, so we can all enjoy these rainbows I see. Thank you very much.
I just want to take this opportunity. I'm choked up, as you can tell. Thank you all so much. Have a good night.
I don't think there's a dry eye up here either, but thank you all so much for coming and sharing a little piece of yourselves with us. We'd love to have you back. Thank you and have a great summer.
Thank you so much to the GSA from Hoboken High School for sharing that with us. I think that was all really profound and powerful, and there's no one in this auditorium that would disagree. At this time, I would like to call Vaian Hari, our May Student of the Month, up to the podium for Brandt School.
Congratulations to Vaian Hari, our Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for May 2023. Vaian was nominated by Ms. Kontogianis, his third-grade teacher. Ms. Kay said, "Vaian is a role model student. He comes to school every day prepared to do his best. He works hard to excel in his academics. When concepts don't come easy or when things get tough, it takes practice, and Vaian is always willing to put in the work. Being able to work with him has been such a positive part of my year. He has many great qualities that influence multiple facets of my classroom and the third grade as a whole. Vaian is always looking to help others and looks for ways to include everyone. He truly wants every student to succeed, an amazing trait. He sees the positive in every situation and tries to help others see it that way as well. Vaian always helps others and tries to make people feel better. He's taken on a leadership role and is respectful towards his classmates and teachers. He also displays great responsibility. As principal, I see Vaian shows the true qualities of a Brandt bear. Ms. Kay characterized Vaian's third-grade journey by saying, "It's not about perfection, it's about effort. When you bring that effort every single day, that's where transformation happens." Vaian consistently stays true to himself and is honest. He handles matters among his peers independently and in a positive way. He does his very best to help others in need and makes choices daily that showcase his integrity. Vaian follows directions, stays on tasks, and puts forth tremendous effort into every piece of work. Vaian enjoys playing football, soccer, and baseball. He loves theater and was a part of the Hoboken District Musical SpongeBob. He liked being in the play because, he said, "It was my time to shine and show others what I was capable of doing. I came out of my shell this school year, and I was proud of myself for doing that." When Vaian grows up, he wants to be a football player and a banker. He plans to continue being physically active and enhancing his football skills. He also said, "Everyone trusts a banker with their money, and I seem like the person for the job. I love math, and it feels like the right job for me." When told he would win this award, Vaian said, "This school year, I've worked really hard to achieve many things that I thought were hard to do at first. Every day, I got closer and closer to accomplishing more things than I thought I could. With the help of my teacher, Ms. Kay, I was able to grow my confidence and believe in myself even more. My parents encouraged me every day to try my best and never give up. They taught me that even though something is challenging, as long as I put my best foot forward and work hard, I can overcome anything. They believe in me, and that helped me believe in myself." Please know that we all believe in you, Vaian. We are all very proud of your third-grade journey and wish you continued success. Please join me in congratulating Vaian Hari, our Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for May 2023.
At this time, I would like to welcome back to the podium Ms. Addie from Connors Elementary School.
At this time, I would like to call up Sophia Wren, the Connors Student of the Month for Connors Elementary School is proud to recognize Ms. Sophia Wren, a second-grade student in Ms. Garcia's homeroom, as Student of the Month. Ms. Garcia nominated Sophia for this honor because of her incredible efforts in her academics, as well as for her wonderful disposition and character. Sophia is an excellent speaker, very creative, and hardworking. It is clear to see that she inspires others to be the best version of themselves. Sophia treats everyone with the utmost respect, and you could always tell that she has such big plans for her future. Sophia is interested in many topics, including reading, math, and science. She received academic honors this marking period. Sophia excels in many areas and loves to challenge herself on a daily basis, showing different ways to solve a problem. She enjoys sharing her strategies with the class and enjoys participating in discussions. Sophia is a kind young lady that is dedicated to her family. She enjoys reading and can be found reading a variety of genres in class. She always comes to school with a positive attitude. Every day, she aspires to do great things. When we asked Sophia to tell us a little bit about herself and this honor, Sophia shared that her favorite subject in school is math. She wanted to share that she's bilingual and can speak fluent Mandarin. She is a proud member of our Johns Hopkins CTY program, and when she gets older, she is planning on being a musician, an artist, or maybe a writer. Her classmates shared that Sophia is superkind and helpful and is always caring for others. Ms. Barsakova shared that Sophia is a proud member of the Johns Hopkins Center for Talented Youth Program. She applies her creative and problem-solving skills to complete CTY projects and assignments with amazing results. Sophia, we are so incredibly proud of your accomplishments, both in academics and character. You are an asset to our Connors Koala family. Please join me in a round of applause in congratulating Sophia Wren, the Connors Elementary School Student of the Month. At this time, I'd like to call up Liz Lawrence, the Vice Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Please welcome Makayla Malave to the podium as Wallace Elementary School Student of the Month for June. Makayla is a fifth grader at Wallace Elementary School and was nominated by her teacher, Ms. Gavin, for displaying a strong work ethic throughout the entire school year. Makayla has been a true role model for her peers and embodies what it means to roar. She tackles assignments with a high level of care and effort. In the classroom, her teachers can always trust that she can take the lead with a small group project while always being inclusive and open-minded to the ideas of her fellow Wildcats. This level of grace and maturity really sets Makayla apart. We are proud to share that Makayla has also taken up extracurriculars that have enriched and challenged her this year. She learned to play violin and has discovered a newfound love for the game of softball. Makayla has also been exploring the idea of becoming an actress when she grows up, something that she is well on her way with as she has developed her public speaking skills after being voted by her peers to represent her class as a member of the Wallace School Student Council. The Wallace Student Council facilitator, Ms. Carolyn Martinez, was so proud to hear of Makayla's recognition, saying, "Thank you, Makayla, for your dedication to our Wallace family. Continue to make your community and the world a better place." We can say with confidence that Makayla's classroom is a better place because of her integral part in it. Her positive attitude, humor, and well-natured personality makes her easy to love and get along with. Her classmates describe her as kind, respectful, friendly, and intelligent. When Principal Shannon asked her what she will remember most about her experience at Wallace, she said, "The teachers." It would make sense for her emotional intelligence to kick in when asked this because she makes connections, not only with academic concepts, but with people as well. Makayla not only carries her knowledge learned, but also the relationships that have nurtured her growth along the way. We have no doubt that Makayla will reach any goal that she sets out for herself because of her drive. She understands that she has to get comfortable with the uncomfortable to push herself forward, and that there's always something to learn from everyone's life experiences. When accepting this award, Makayla, we hope you feel an immeasurable amount of pride because you have earned it. May it remind you of your strength and your impact on others. Continue to dream big and apply yourself in all you do. Congratulations to Makayla, our Wallace School Student of the Month for June. Please welcome back to the podium Mr. Sorafin, Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
Please welcome to the podium Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for June 2023, Syra was nominated by our sixth-grade team to be Student of the Month for being a role model every day in the classroom and always meeting the high expectations that Hoboken Middle School holds for their students. Syra is sweet, caring, and kind to her peers, while also always being engaged and willing to help those around her. Academically, she is extremely hardworking and excels in everything she puts her mind to. Ms. Gomez shares that Syra is an absolute pleasure to teach and was so happy for the opportunity to get to know her this past year and watch her grow. Currently, Syra is a member of the Johns Hopkins CTY program and participates in both chorus and band. Syra was very proud to share that the chorus and band received superior and excellent awards at this year's Six Flags Competition Trills and Thrills. Syra enjoys hobbies such as drawing, singing, playing the flute, and acting. Her favorite subjects to study in school are science and math. Syra has big goals to one day attend Yale and possibly pursue a career in singing, acting, or marine biology. When asked two of Syra's classmates, they were happy to share their thoughts on Syra and her achievement of winning Student of the Month. Nora Block shared, "Syra is so funny and intelligent. She always lightens the mood in the most serious situations and is such a good friend. She is always hardworking and trying to get a classroom, and trying to get her classroom test done as efficiently as possible." possible." Kate Marinello confidently states, "Syra is the most hardworking person that I know. She is a great friend and such a great student. She works incredibly hard at everything she does and never falls short of greatness. She is an amazing actor and even better scholar. She is such an overachiever, so generous, and just an all-around amazing person who always looks for the best interests of others and always gives her peers a helping hand. I am so glad she is my friend and she more than deserves to be recognized as Student of the Month. Congrats, Syra. You have some great friends." When we asked Syra how she felt about her first year at Hoboken Middle School, she shared, "Middle school is a great opportunity to make new friends and bond with new people. There are also so many after-school activities which allow students to explore new opportunities to focus their time and effort in a positive way. All staff at Hoboken Middle School eased the transition from elementary school to middle school and have made my time here more fun. It has been so nice to watch Syra and all that she has accomplished this year. Congratulations on a well-deserved award. Please join me in a round of applause for Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for June, Syra Bindra." Did you want to take a picture? At this time, I would like to invite Ms. McCreary back to the podium.
Good evening again. At this time, I'd like to invite up Samantha Gotamir, Hoboken High School Student of the Month for June. Sammy is a freshman and was nominated by Ms. Troutman, who shared she is an incredibly motivated, dedicated, and respectful individual who embodies the Red Wing spirit. She is kind to her classmates and participates in classroom discussions daily. She is always here after school for clubs or activities and helps maintain an inclusive and supportive school environment. Exceptional student, kind person, fearless advocate, and leader are most of the words that I heard from her teacher. Ms. Stasiak said Samantha is always a ray of sunshine when she enters the band room, bringing positive energy with her infectious smile. She is always eager to learn how to get better on her instrument and practices on her own even though she has band every day. Her superior work ethic will take her far. As a freshman, she chose to challenge herself by taking AP and pre-AP classes across the board. She has no grade lower than a 94 for any marking period and has been on the high honor roll consistently for the entire year. Her GPA at the conclusion of the year will be over 4.5. She is not only an academic, she is well-rounded, participating in band and debate club, but her excellence on the track has made the headlines. Her coach Mendez asked me to share some of her highlights. Don't go running. Cross-country. Hudson County Freshmen Girls Cross-Country Champion. Group One Champion Qualifier. Indoor Track and Field. Hudson County Freshmen's Girls 1600-meter, 3200-meter Champion. North Two Group One State Sectional 1600-3200-meter Champion. School Record Holder in Three Events, 1,000-meter, 1600-meter, and 3200-meter. Third Team All-County in both 1600-meter and 3200-meter events. Outdoor Track and Field. Group One Championship Qualifier in 1600-3200-meter. School Record Holder in the 3200-meter. An Honorable Mention, All-County Honors in 3200-meter Event. And she's a freshman. So I have to ask, best time for 3200-meter? 1210. That's two miles, people, 1210. I can't even drive that fast. 1600-meter? Okay, 531. Ridiculous. Very proud of you, Sammy. I asked Sammy what, you know, the best part of the year was for her, and she said it was definitely having access to the pre-AP and AP classes as a freshman and the track and cross-country program as well as Coach Mendez. Her drive comes from wanting to be successful and to be able to get into her dream college, which is Georgetown or Brown, where she plans on running track. Her goal is to become an environmental lawyer and run Division One track. Short-term, she wants to make New Balance Nationals, right? She enjoys running, obviously, reading, skiing, and hanging out with her friends. They would describe her as competitive, ambitious, assertive, and persistent. This persistence is what sets you apart, Sammy, and I am confident we will be reading about your accomplishments moving forward. Congratulations, Sammy.
Congratulations to all of our students recognized tonight.
Yes, at this time, I'm gonna call-
Oh, I'm forgetting we're going out of order. Should we have-
I think-
Oh, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
Yeah, we're gonna continue celebrations.
I was thinking Mr. Bartlett was gonna come up at the end, like he did the first time around. But before we get to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, congratulations to our students. You have done such amazing work and we'd like to wish you the best summer. Do your summer homework so that you're ready for September. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
Yes. All families should have received the summer assignments. If you have any questions, I'll be here to answer any questions. I wanna thank you for your attention and for celebrating our students. I take the podium now, which is really rare for me to do after celebrations, but I am doing so purposefully. I have a special announcement to make. Last week, I was invited to attend the Hudson County Superintendent's Roundtable. This is the regular June meeting for Hudson County Superintendents and the final one of the year. That is about the only thing that was regular about this meeting. At this meeting, the County Superintendent, Melissa Pierce, announced that our very own Superintendent, Dr. Christine Johnson, was selected as the Superintendent of the Year for Hudson County. Now, I was not a member of the committee and neither was anyone on the dais or in the crowd. Dr. Johnson's superintendent colleagues, her leadership, her record of service, is what made her the one and only clear choice. She leads with deep content knowledge and an amazing humanity. She kept our schools open when other surrounding districts just could not. She elevated instruction and programming while other districts would not. She innovated when other districts were living in their status quo. What a time to be a student in Hoboken. As her Assistant Superintendent and someone who wanted balloons in a marching band, it gives me great joy to share this with you tonight. I am so honored to work alongside her daily and look forward to many more years to come. At this time, I would like to ask any members of the Board of Education to share some thoughts about her and this amazing professional development.
I'd love to start. If I can get the tears out of my eyes. Dr. Johnson, from the moment you stepped foot in Hoboken in 2015, you've poured your heart and soul into this district. My goodness. I have witnessed it from the start and I couldn't be more proud to be on this journey with you. The progress that this district has made in such a short period of time is miraculous. We often talk about the significant enrollment growth that the district has experienced and continues to see, but what's driving the enrollment growth are happy families, amazing opportunities in and out of the classroom for our students, and real progress being made. When I think of just a few of your accomplishments, I think about the fact that the Hoboken Public School District has been designated as a High Performing District through the QSEC Continuum. The Hoboken Public School District was named a Lighthouse District for Equity District of Distinction. The Hoboken Public School District is now outperforming the state of New Jersey in English Language Arts and Mathematics on the NJSLA. The Hoboken Public School District was only one of two districts in Hudson County to make remarkable progress in the area of mathematics and English Language Arts since 2017 and 18. As you know, things in Hoboken are not always easy. In fact, sometimes they're downright hard. But when you have someone like you with a vision, who leads with her soul, nothing can stop you. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Hoboken students are very lucky to have you.
Yes, I'll go next, even though Sharon took my entire speech and made it her own. You know, I can't add much to that. All of that says it all, but I'll say this. When I began on this Board of Education, I wasn't sure what to expect, but what I found was a rare human being, somebody who completely dedicates themselves to other people. She has completely dedicated herself to the students of this district. She is tireless in it. She works all the time. And I will say for myself that through all the years that I've been on this earth, I have not learned as much about anything as noble as what she does as I have in these four years. I have learned so much about the world of education and what it really means to be a superintendent, to be a teacher, to be an administrator, and what difference it makes. I think I understood it before, but I didn't really understand it until now I see it in practice. And we are a lucky bunch. That is all there is to it. And our children are also very lucky and I commend Dr. Johnson for all the work that she has done here on behalf of not just our students, but the entire community.
Totally unscripted. Now, I just wanted to take a moment as someone who works alongside Dr. Johnson and I speak on behalf of all my fellow administrators. She is a leader, but along with leading, she teaches. And I think that's the most valuable thing that anyone could ever take away. It's, you know, the day-to-day of our jobs are our jobs, but, you know, if we don't understand something, she takes the time to explain it to us and why we do things. And so, she's a fabulous leader, but she's also a great friend and a great teacher and we are truly blessed and lucky to have you, forever grateful. Thank you. Just gonna stay here all night. At this time, I'd like to call up Naomi Cook, our Student Government Representative from Hoboken High School.
How am I supposed to follow that? Hello, my name is Naomi Cook. I am the Hoboken High School Student Government Board Representative. It is an honor to speak to you this evening, unfortunately for the last time. Our Student Government Officer elections are being held this Thursday, June 15th. Two other student government members, Aria Kahana and Jenna Sierra, will be running for the honor of the Student Government School Board Representative. I will be on the ballot running for the Student Government Secretary. The Hoboken High School Student Government and Hoboken High School Activities Office had a productive and busy month. The high school has been busy with pre-AP testing and we are gearing up for the class of 2023, culminating events beginning tomorrow with Hoboken High School Senior Awards Dinner on Wednesday, June 14th at 6:00 PM at the Hoboken High School Auditorium, followed by the senior barbecue on Friday at the stadium and the senior breakfast and senior movie night on Tuesday. I can only imagine how tired Mr. Munoz is. We wanted to keep this report brief this month. I also would like to note that we are holding our annual Juneteenth flag raising at Hoboken High School on Thursday, June 15th at 9:30 AM. National Honor Society. The National Honor Society recently inducted 34 new members and will bid farewell to 18 seniors. The NHS had the biggest group of candidates to date this year with 52 eligible members submitting all selection materials. After thorough review of all candidate materials, the faculty council interviewed all 52 candidates and selected 34. Yearbook Club. We would like to thank Ms. McReeve and the entire Yearbook staff. The seniors cannot wait to see the final product next week. Athletics. Congratulations to the following softball players on receiving all league awards yesterday for the HCIAL American Division. All-Division First Team, Amayed Richardson, Isabella Pisano. Isabella, who is only a freshman, finished fourth in the county in strikeouts with 100 on the season. Honorable mentions, Alexa Bersaro, Julie Jacobelli, and Alexa finished ninth in the county with hits with 31. Congratulations to the following baseball players on receiving all league awards yesterday for the HCIAL National Division. Player of the Year, Jonathan Salinas. Pitcher of the Year, Ethan Ortiz. Coach of the Year, Coach Benway. All-Division One First Team, Tyler Shalinski CF, Mike D'Antonio Utility, Adrian Tavera Utility. Honorable mentions, Benny Sacala Infield, Connor Shalinski Infield. Hoboken High School's Track and Field Team recently competed for two days in the N2GI State Nationals meet at The Ridge High School. The Four Times 100 relay team of Zaden Simmons, Damian Viscorondo, Hudson Tasang, and Alexander Gray placed second. Simmons also placed for a tie for the third in the 200M dash and sixth in the 400M. Samantha Gottimer placed third for the 3200M and fourth in the 1600M. Each of the student athletes mentioned above qualified and will advance to the Group One State Championships this weekend at Franklin High School in Somerset. Congratulations to the following team members for receiving all county honors this season. Zaden Simmons tied second team all-county for the 100M dash. Samantha Gottimer, honorable mention for the 3200M. Oh yes, we have a lot to be excited about at the Nest. Note, the graduation is Thursday, June 22nd at 6:00 PM at Lewis M. Taggaleri Stadium. Thank you very much for this final opportunity to speak with you and we look forward to seeing you at our events. And as always, go Red Wings.
Thank you, Naomi. It's always great to have you and best of luck in your election. Come back and visit us anytime. Next, we will be moving into the business portion of our meeting, so I know it's been a lengthy meeting. If anybody wants to scoot out, that's fine. Have a wonderful summer and we'll just take one minute and then we will get started on the business portion. Okay, we're going to start back up again. Yeah, we're ready. And we'll start with you, Ms. Goode. Do you have a Business Administrator's Report tonight?
Yes, I do, but prior to reading the Business Administrator's Report, I would like to read this. Mr. Clufffield, Tom Clufffield, please accept and wear this New Jersey School Board Association's Pinewood Pride. It stands for your commitment to promote the achievement of all New Jersey students. Your success has always been New Jersey School Board Association's mission. For more than 100 years, we have dedicated ourselves to working to advance public education in New Jersey by adhering to the highest levels of quality, professionalism, and integrity. Together, we set the highest standard of school board members nationwide. And this was written by- And this was written by Dr. Timothy Purnell. And here is a certificate, a milestone award for you, Mr. Cluffield. And thank you for your service. Okay, so the Business Administrators Report is- I'm sorry?
This was a surprise. I wasn't expecting this. I misunderstood. Have I been on the board 100 years? Is that what you said?
No, you have not. You have been on the board 10 years.
Oh, 10 years, okay.
Yes. Okay, I will read three separate motions from the floor. The first motion that I would read is, all three are for governance. The first number is 10.43. Be it resolved that the Hoboken Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, along with our negotiation committee, approves the Memorandum of Agreement between the Hoboken Education Association and the Hoboken Board of Education, effective July 1, 2023 to June 30 of 2026. 10.44. Be it resolved to approve the Seeger-Weiss Retainer Agreement, subject to the terms and conditions reflected therein. 10.45. Be it resolved that the Board, following due consideration, denies the subject employee grievance. That's all I need to read. These resolutions will also be voted on with all the other agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Next, we'll move to Curriculum. Ms. McGurk.
Good evening. This has been quite a meeting so far. Before I get started with my committee report, I just wanted to say a brief word of thank you. Thanks to the GSA for coming and speaking with us tonight and sharing their truth. I don't get to go to the flag raisings very often because I'm at work. So it was really nice to be able to get a little bit of a taste of that, but also to hear from our students and to hear, you know, just what a great place Hoboken High School has been for them. And I was moved to tears, which I don't think has ever happened up here. And then, of course, congratulations to Tom on his 10 years of service. And a very special congratulations to Dr. Johnson. I could go on for hours about Dr. Johnson with all of the different things that she has done. But I will just say this much. There is, you know, never a dull moment in being on a Board of Education. And she is a person that I would choose over anyone to go through those entertaining, interesting, challenging, and never dull moments with. So thank you for all of that. The Curriculum Committee met virtually on June 7 in attendance for Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamatory, Mr. Delatorre, Mr. Grania, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, and Assistant Superintendent Ms. Rodriguez Gomez. There is one agenda item on tonight's agenda, a partnership with Keene University on Holocaust and Genocide Studies, and we recommend it for Board approval. The committee also discussed several non-agenda items, including the middle and high school GSA students joining us at tonight's meeting, a grant that is going to be submitted to the NIDA LOE 21st Century Community Learning Center grant that's being submitted, which would help to establish a 21st Century CCLC at Hoboken High School. So we hope that that grant submission is successful. There was also a review of the Aeronautics Program that will be coming next year, discussion around the mathematics sequence for NJSLA Pre-Algebra. You must pass in order to ascend to geometry. And then there's some revised Hoboken High School Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion graduation requirements. So a quarter of African-American history and culture, a quarter of Latino history and culture, one quarter of Asian-American history and culture, and one quarter of people who have shaped the world. The committee also discussed the summer assignments, which I know in my house, everybody is very excited about, and the early elementary literacy initiative. So I hope everybody has a great summer, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. Kana.
Facilities Committee met on Friday, June 9 at 11:00 a.m. In attendance were Mr. Callagie, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Norwood, Mr. Cluffield, and myself. There are two agenda items for Facilities this month, and we recommend both for Board approval. 14.01 is a fire and safety drill for May, and 14.02 is a Facilities request. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Cluffield.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met yesterday, Monday, June 12. Joining me were Ms. Norwood, Mr. Grania, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Good, and Ms. Lopez. This is an unusually long agenda, Finance Agenda. I think 37 items, it says. And we recommend all of them for approval. We reviewed all of them. The majority, by far, are sort of housekeeping, annual renewals and reappointments and signatories to checks, things like that. So the length is, doesn't indicate particular concerns. We did review everything. I should point out to any parents or public in the audience here that we are happy to announce that our food prices remain the same as this year. Inflation is not affecting our food services program for the next school year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And Governance, Mr. Kirian.
Hi, good evening. A few things just before I get started on my Governance and Personnel Agenda items. First, I want to thank and recognize the Hoboken High School GSA for coming out tonight. As Ms. Martina said at the beginning, Mr. Cluffield and I had the pleasure of seeing the GSA Flag Raising last week, and it was beautiful and moving. And we're so glad that they were all able to take time out of their lives tonight and come to speak to us and to the broader community. Such just beautiful presentations by each of them, whether it was reading a poem that was spoke to them or giving us history about Pride Month, the rainbow flag, and the struggles of the LGBTQIA communities, or reading an incredibly beautiful personal poem. We're really lucky to have these students in our district and their strength and bravery to come out and to speak in public on a topic that isn't always well-received. And I'm so proud of our community for being one that is inclusive and welcoming. Beyond that, just congratulations to Tom for his 10 years of service and congratulations to Dr. Johnson for a well-deserved recognition. I won't say anything more because all the important things have been said already. But I've been very lucky to have been able to serve on the Board of Education with her as our Superintendent of Schools. Just moving on now to Committee. The Governance Committee and Personnel met on June 7. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Kana, and myself. The Committee discussed all agenda items, and we recommend all for approval. As is typical throughout the school year, you'll see a number of agenda items for leave requests, appointments, resignations of teachers and other personnel. In tonight's agenda, this includes paraprofessionals, custodial staff, teachers, substitutes, as well as staff for activities, including the spring music concerts, senior award night, Girls on the Run 5K. As we approach the end of the school year and look forward to the 2023-2024 school year, you'll also find agenda items pertaining to school programming, or, I'm sorry, summer programming, including extended school year, credit recovery, IEP work, and summer band camp, as well as items related to the new school year, including coaches and advisors for fall sports, the spion competition Friday nights at the Nest. Additional items to note of importance in terms of resignations, I want to recognize Ms. Rosa Rivera, who has served male clerk in the central office for 28 years. We thank her for her dedicated tenure to our district and to the administrators, teachers, and students that she has helped along the way, wishing her all the best in her retirement and, you know, health and happiness there. As usual, there are agenda items for the approval of a variety of workshops for district staff, including the workshops that enhance the skills and network of the participants. Some non-agenda items that we discussed. We'll be introducing a new program called TATA Teacher Program in partnership with Ramapo College. This program helps paraprofessionals earn their teacher certificates, and we're excited to be hosting that program. We have a number of paraprofessionals from our school district who will go through that program. Oops, sorry about that. And it's open to other school districts as well. So we're hoping we'll have some paraprofessionals from some other school districts join as well. So we're excited about that. And also, I want to just note that a number of folks from our district, including administrators and teachers, participated in the teacher recruitment project through the partnership with the New Jersey Department of Education and Mathematica with the Regional Educational Laboratory to support the state goal of diversifying the educated workforce. So they participated in a number of sessions throughout the year and are going to bring home to the district a lot of great learnings on how we continue to diversify our staff. And that concludes my report. But before, maybe I hand off, because I think one thing we heard about earlier was the addition of 10.43 of the Memorandum of Understanding. And I'll have Mrs. Katamatory walk us through that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Ms. Good mentioned, as well as Mr. Kirian, the section or agenda item 10.43 is going to be a recommendation for the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with the HEA. I just wanted to say a few words about that. We're very happy to announce that we have come to terms on a Memorandum of Agreement with the HEA for a three-year contract prior to the expiration of the current three-year contract, which is set to expire on June 30. This contract represents a recognition of and respect for the dedication and hard work of our teachers and staff during the COVID pandemic, teaching and working with and for our students in person and remotely, which in itself is no small feat, when very few, if any, other districts were offering families any in-person instruction at all. This alone symbolizes the trust and partnership between our teachers and staff on the one hand and our administration on the other. This contract also represents terms that satisfy the shared goal of the HEA and the administration to promote instructional continuity every day and throughout the year to our students. Ultimately, the teachers and staff did what no one else did what no one else would do during a very uncertain time, to put it lightly. And we can see the results of that work and our students' continued achievement, where others have unfortunately lost some ground. We hope this contract reflects the appreciation of this work. And as I said, the Memorandum of Agreement has been discussed with all Board members, and the Negotiations Committee, along with the Superintendent, recommend that it be approved tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kirian and Ms. Katamatory. And lastly, we'll go to Wellness. Mr. Delatorre.
Thank you. The Wellness Committee met on Wednesday, June 7. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Kirian, Mr. Grania, and I. There are no wellness items on the agenda. However, I would like to share the following. We are excited to report that in partnership with the Red Cross, we will be running a lifeguard certification program for our students, sophomores and out. The certification program will begin this month. Those who are certified will have the opportunity to be employed as lifeguards for our Splash into Literacy and Math Summer Program. Please note that any student interested in obtaining their certification but has difficulty with the cost, the Student Activity Center will cover. Also, thank you to the Hoboken Public Education Foundation for providing the units in our Urban Farming Institute. This past week, we celebrated our fourth and fifth graders from across the district who showed off their hydroponic and aquaphonic techniques they learned this past year. Lastly, congratulations to Tom on his 100 years. Who knew? Very, you know, amazing. Also, congratulations to you, Dr. Johnson. We have benefited as a community from your worth ethic, compassion, and unwavering commitment to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have a report tonight, but I just want to wish everyone a happy, healthy summer. I'd like to congratulate a little early, but our graduates and wish them the best in their future endeavors. And I look forward to seeing everyone else here back in September. So on that note, we will move on to public comment on agenda items. Ms. Versace? And while you're walking up, I'll read what I read before the public comment section. Just a reminder, before we open public comments, over the years and most recently, the Board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the Board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The Board does not condone, nor is the Board party just comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve a speaker from liability for any defamatory comments that an employee may bring against the speaker. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the Board. I also want to remind all speakers of Board policy. Please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes. And Ms. Katamatory will quietly motion with 30 seconds left.
Hello. Good evening. Roseanne Versace of Hoboken. And I'm a well- schooled teacher and the Hoboken Education Association President. I have just a couple of comments first. Congratulations, Tom. 10 years, 100 years, who cares? We're happy you're here. So congratulations for that. I would like to also echo many of the comments that were made for Dr. Johnson. Congratulations on that award. I don't know if there's a specific award for the hardest-working superintendent, but if there was, you would certainly get it. I think that people think if you're the union president that you have to be at odds with everybody else, but that is not the case in this district, and I'm very happy about that. So I thank you for the compassion that you show for the members, the humility that you have. Many people don't know the good things that you do, but I do. And so I appreciate that on behalf of my members. And congratulations again. And thank you to the Board for recommending 10.43, the Memorandum of Agreement. It was a little bit of a long process. I guess anything that takes longer than maybe a month, we think that is a long process. But we were confident that we would come to an agreement, and we appreciate the fact that you recognize the hard work that we did, just generally speaking, but also during the pandemic, the fact that we were here and we were in school. And so it will mean a lot to the membership. And I'm confident that it will be approved tonight. And tomorrow, we will be meeting with the membership, and then hopefully we will have a vote on Thursday into Friday. And we will have a new collective bargaining agreement. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Ms. Waiters?
Patricia Waiters, in respect to the Chair, I'm recording you guys for quality assurance purposes. First, let me start by saying I'm a little disappointed to stand here tonight and wish I can stand here and speak as calmly as the last speaker spoke in regards to 10.43 on the agenda. I don't even want to get emotional because I promise I'm not going to because it only further hurts the employees that I serve as the President for the HSEA. So we stand here tonight, and Roseanne Versace stands here comfortable, calm with pride, smile on her face, smile on some of you guys' faces, the ones with integrity and the ones without. I told you way before this day even came that I was faced with some dirty disparities, racist bias, discrimination, scare tactics, hostile work environment, all while serving as the President of the HSEA. I came to all of you guys. I came to all of you guys with respect to counsel, and I'm always respectful, not only as counsel, as a friend. Not the cronyism political friend, but as a friend. You know I'm gonna call it like it is. And it's a little biased, and it's so funny that you're so quick to always, because I'm a woman of color, so when I say it's racist motivated, instead of you conducting an investigation, you're quick to try to prove that you're not. It's so easy to say with your mouth, "I'm not, we don't do this, we don't do that." And when you look to the opposite side, it's being done through the actions. So now tonight, my contract is on here saying pending, Roseanne Versace's is approved. Okay? Even though I ran against all of you, and I got petitions to run against this year, I still was hoping that I could get the professionalism like I got from you, Ms. Good, and thank you so much for reaching out. I have both dates you reached out with an intent to start my negotiation process. You also told me, "Oh, but you won't be ready." I prepared myself the minute I won. I was ready. I was ready. Y'all know that. And for me to come up here and ask you, hoping, hoping, even especially my opponents, and Mr. Grana, I just laugh with you because you was like over-exaggerating. You jumping up, giving people hands, giving high fives. Where's your integrity? You ran against me as my opponent. Not one time, and all of y'all promised to serve under the authority of the people. Not one time, even after I told you, none of you guys contacted me. I'm sorry, with the exception of you, business administrator. So what could you tell me tonight? I don't want a pity party. I want justice. I want justice, because it continues. I don't care about fake blogs, people writing to bring the superintendent down. I don't care about the county at this point, which is very political. Shame on the county superintendent. I want answers, guys. I'm not disappearing. This one hurts. I suffered almost two heart attacks. I lie to you not. Manuel is my witness. I signed myself out of medical center last night, and they looked at me and said, "Are you crazy?" I said, "Yes, because if I die, I'm gonna die with integrity. I'm gonna die fighting and doing what I love and have a passion for, and that's fighting for the people." My people got a long way to go in this district. That's why I ran for president. And for my union now, now to go against me with no, nothing at all, no type of reason, no type of probable cause, just because I'm Patricia Waiters, the first black female president that cannot be controlled, bought, or brought. That's what this is about. And guys, I know legislation. I'm quite sure you got a lawyer with integrity. You don't have to remain silent. When this is a public meeting, you know under the sunshine meeting laws, I put it on the record, I deserve answers. I deserve respect. Just like every other thing on here, and these appointments that you do, Ms. Administrator, with your appointment and making your, the same thing with me. I work for the district, I'm an employee, I deserve answers. I've got a question of everything on this agenda, but I'm not going to take up much more of your time, okay? What I'm gonna do, again, is place it on the record that I want answers. I want answers what I'm experiencing in this district and on these campuses, and I definitely want answers, wrapping it up, just saying this, because they have, Ms. Good, as the business administration, with these appointments for affirmative action. I understand they're not paid positions, but do you appoint these people to these positions, these administrators? No. Well, according to this, you appoint them to these positions.
Your time is up, Waiters.
All right, thank you. I'm wrapping it up again. I want answers. I ask you a question, the same way you do other people when they come up here. You can answer my question now. Who, I highlighted it, I just want to know, who appoint these people to these positions? And they all administrators. It says, Ms. Good. Ms. Good, you do the affirmative action appointments.
You're asking me to...
Yes, it's on the agenda. I'm speaking on agenda items.
No, I do not do affirmative.
All right, I will finish on the public portion, ma'am, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manuel Rivera Soler?
Mic is a little too low. Manuel Rivera Soler. I first would like to say once again, congratulations to the 100-year-old or 10-years-old in service. Thank you for your service, and to the recognition of the superintendent. But niceties aside, I would like to ask questions on some of these agenda items. I'm gonna do it as I do in the city council meetings, because I know that you will perhaps not answer the question, but I will go and tick them off. Again, this is 11.23. Are these the appropriate insurance? These are the ones that the employees get to choose, or these are the ones that they have to have? 11.27, once again, same insurance question. Is that amount or the amounts that will be paid, I'm sorry, in 11.29, are those amounts estimated, or are they actual amounts for the whole months and the years that are there? Now I'm just gonna say the numbers. 1304, because this agenda is packed for being the last one. I know my time is ticking, but I did mark them, so we'll get to them. 10.25, I would like to know how members of the public, of course, can get more information. I know there's the site, but usually it doesn't give details on the appointments. 10.36, I would like to say a thank you to the volunteers in that youth program for their dedication to the school district and especially the students. Thank you for that, to those volunteers. I would also like to say, and I can't find them at the moment, but in regards to the grants, I hope that we do apply for them, and that we do, when I say "we," the school district does aggressively go for them, because it's very important, because I was listening to another, as the meeting was going on, to another commission, and grants are very important to them in regards to what they are able to achieve, as well as any donation should any member of the public decide to give to the district. Now, I don't know if my time is still up or not, but that is basically, if there's any way that you could answer those questions, I doubt it, but if I could find the answers on the school's portal, that would be grateful, because there's a lot of questions in regards to different appointments. Some of them are their volunteers, because I see people's names on many different positions. Are these positions paid? You know, I don't want to take off names, but there are quite a lot of positions that are being filled by one or two persons, and is that enough time for one or two persons to do all of those jobs? And I'm not just asking it here, because I ask it in the city council, that there are also people who are doing multiple jobs. Can they do those jobs efficiently? That's a question I'm sure parents and members of the public would like to know. I'm sure that perhaps, simple things, like an air monitor, it is important, because we breathe air, but what does that entail? Do they go around with some type of equipment measuring the air, because then that would be time-consuming, and would they be able to do the other six things that they are appointed for? That's just my question, and I thank you for your attention, and perhaps I'll come back in public portion. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. I did write down all of the agenda items that you mentioned, so we can go back and take a look and be in touch with you.
Thank you.
That's it. Is there a motion?
Second. Who made the motion, please? Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes, but abstain on 10.43.
Mr. Grana?
Yes, but abstain on 10.43.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluckford?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
I'm legally required to abstain on 10.43, and yes to the rest.
Ms. DeKarian?
Abstain on 10.45, and yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we'll go on to comments on both agenda and on agenda items.
Roseanne Versace, Hoboken Wallace School. I just wanted to comment on a few things. Congratulations to Rosa Rivera on her retirement. Sadly, I wanted to acknowledge two former members of the Hoboken Education Association, Annette Turner, who was a fourth-grade teacher at Wallace School for many years, who passed away last week, and John Buscignich, Mr. Boo, everyone loved Mr. Boo. He was a teacher at various schools in the district, Demerist, I believe even Brand, Vice Principal at Connors, Vice Principal at Wallace. He passed away after a rather lengthy illness. Matter of fact, went to the wake this evening, and he was just such a good soul. If you knew him, you loved him, and he loved you right back, so just wanted to acknowledge him this evening. But also wanted, as we close out the year, two of our members, William Appicella and Lynn Gallow, are retiring at the end of this school year. Bill started his career here in 1983, so he finished up 40 years, which is pretty impressive. And Lynn started in 1990, and she's finishing up, I guess, on June 30th, so that's 33 years. Yeah, I'm gonna math this off tonight. 33 years. And also Nancy Lisa, who celebrated her 25th anniversary this year as well in the district. So we have a lot of very dedicated people, and we're very proud to have them as members, and grateful for all their contributions to the district. And just to close, I'd just like to wish everyone a great summer. I'll probably see you at the July meeting, but nevertheless, for those of you in TV land, happy summer, and be safe, and we'll see you in September. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Waiters, I guess I spoke too fast. Mr. Grana, thank you, and Ms. Bethany, thank you. Even though this passed, I still want you to conduct an investigation along with your no vote for Resolution 10.43. Am I right? Did you just vote on Resolution 10.43?
I'm legally required to abstain.
No. Okay, I'm still asking, like I said, even though it passed, I want an investigation, please. Can you just look into that for me?
For what?
I'm sorry?
For what? Investigation for what?
Because I'm asking them. That was their promise, and their campaign promise when they could. That's their job as a board member. So I'll still write the letter to the whole board as an entirety, but I'm asking both of them, unless I got the wrong vote. You voted yes or no? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The record will show that I abstained.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's what I'm saying, I'm making sure. I'm not concerned right now about the yes votes, I'm just making sure I know what I heard. Okay? Thank you, anyway. Anyway, 10.44, business administrator, what is that?
10.44?
Yes. I hope at the end of the day, when I do get my justice, I can have a smile on my face since it's so comical.
Okay, I will re-read 10.44.
Yeah, you said that, but added up.
10.44, be it resolved to approve the Seeger Weiss retainer agreement, subject to the terms and conditions reflected therein. Mr. Gaddiardi, would you like to respond to her question regarding this resolution?
Seeger Weiss is a law firm, and they have authorized to handle a specialized matter on behalf of the board. I'm not gonna say what it is, because that's...
Right, you can honor it.
But it's unrelated to any personnel.
Thank you so much, counsel.
Ms. Waiters?
Now...
Can I just interrupt you for one second, and make something clear that you had asked? I want to make sure. I believe what you're asking about regarding a vote on 10.43?
Yes.
Okay. I believe, Ms. Good, the numbering on that motion needs to be redone, because 10.43 is an approval of workshops. So I think the resolutions that you read in are supposed to begin with 10.44 and go 10.45, 10.46. So that would modify the extension from the members, whichever members abstained. The vote that you're abstaining on should be a different number, so can you redo that? I think that'll help.
So what I will do is 10.43, that I numbered as 10.43, I do apologize, that will now be 10.46, and we will need another roll call, another motion and roll call for 10.43.
Okay.
So there were three resolutions added to the written agenda this evening. There was the Memorandum of Agreement, there was the Seeger Weiss Law Firm matter that I just explained, and then there was the grievance. The problem is that there were two 10.43s, and so it wasn't clear what board members were voting on and what they, that on which they abstained. I think that procedurally, the correct way to do this is to make a motion to reconsider, which any board member who voted in the affirmative can do. Make a vote, make a motion to reconsider the votes on both 10.43s. And if that vote passes, then I will identify that which the board can move on, which is going to be 43 and 46, so it's clear to the board and the public what they're voting on, because that mistake makes it unclear. So my respectful suggestion, Madam President, is to entertain a motion to reconsider the votes on 10.43.
As amended?
Well, not as amended, I'm gonna, it's gonna roll it back and then do a correction.
I'm sorry, I mean, I want to be the...
That's all right. I know you wanted to work on it as my paralegal, but I haven't hired you yet. No problem, you raised a good point, I'm gonna fix it. So could I have a motion to reconsider the votes on 10.43?
Motion. Second.
Okay.
Ms. DeKarian, you do the vote. Yeah. Who did the second?
Right, so that's fine, because they voted in the affirmative, so now the motion's on the table, anybody can vote on it. This is just a motion to reconsider, it's not a vote to approve or disprove anything, just to reconsider it.
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Grana?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluckford?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes, to reconsider.
Okay.
Ms. DeKarian?
Yes. Ms. Angley? Yes.
All right, so as it turned out, there were two motions labeled 10.43. My respectful suggestion to the President is that there now be a vote on 10.43, approval of workshops, and 10.46, which is the Memorandum of Agreement.
Ms. Katamatori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes, but abstain on 10.46.
Ms. Grana?
Yes, on 10.43.
Yes, on 10.43, abstain on 10.46.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluckford?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Abstain on 10.46, because of my legal duty, and yes on the rest.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so now...
So just for your purposes, Ms. Waiters, the motion on the memorandum of agreement is 10.46.
Right, I have it. I took the notes. Well taken care of. Then you put a call for 10.46. That was just this last vote. Thank you very much, I'm well awake. The other question I had is...
I'm just gonna tell you, I'm gonna restart your time, Ms. Waiters.
The other question I had is approval of appointments, I don't have to say what page, just the public portion, approval of appointments for 2023, 2024. And I don't have to say the names, Mr. Dickerson, Ms. Good, you on there, Jane Soul, that's what I'm gonna know, how you're gonna appoint yourself, William James, and the list goes on. That's 10.25 and 10.26. And it says, recommendation and appointments and approval by Business Administrator, which, if you turn to the next page, the Business Administrator and the Assistant Superintendent's contract is on this agenda, and I know you'll be voting on that tonight. So that's not a conflict of interest of any sort, just to place it on the record.
Okay, so let me enter the question regarding Assistant Superintendent's contract.
10.41 and 42.
Assistant Superintendent's contract, the Business Administrator's contract, and when a Superintendent's contract is negotiated, before a Board of Education can approve the contract, the contracts go to the county office for review and approval. So all the language and everything in that contract is approved, reviewed and approved by the county office before it is presented to the Board of Education.
Okay, so again, all you just explained is not on here. It simply says the administrator, which is yourself, makes these appointments. I'm going by the language that's in front of me, and I will reach out to the county, I mean, if I need answers from them. These answers I'm asking you is concerning this agenda that's in front of me tonight, saying that you make the appointments and approvals, which would be a conflict of interest, first of all, to appoint yourself in part of affirmative action, and then also your contract, and also the approval of appointments for these affirmative actions for 2022, 2023, and '4. So I'm just asking you, it's right here in front of you. I gave you the number, 10.25, 10.26, and then both of y'all contracts, which, no disrespect to nobody, my superintendent do a phenomenal job. Professionalism means a lot, trust me. So you saying go to the county for answers?
If you have a veto, do you want to make that count?
I can, I can respond.
You earning your money tonight, go ahead.
Sure. So I think, first of all, I think probably the language in the resolution is a little misleading, because it says that the Business Administrator is approving the appointment. She's actually submitting them for approval to the board. Right, so the board's approving them. And the affirmative action officer for contracts, which lists Ms. Good, the contracts we're talking about there are not collective bargaining agreements. The contracts we're talking about are the contracts from vendors with the district, third parties, not district employees. So she is not overseeing the affirmative action for collective bargaining agreements.
But when you say vendors...
Or her own, no employee.
Different vendors when they put in bids and stuff like that?
Correct.
But it can't be like, no cronyism or friends or whatever. All right.
That type of affirmative action, correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we have another speaker?
Mr. Manuel Rivera Soler.
For whoever enjoys that sound, they should send a donation to the school district. Madam President, I would like to know if you extended Ms. Waiters' time, or because of the confusion, or did you start her time over? Should that be the case, I ask for equal time. Not that I will take it, but I just want to say the following. I kept this paper because, by the way, good evening, buena noche a todos, buena noche a todas, and good evening. I just would like to say, I kept the paper because I was at a meeting by Viasum, and we have to pay attention. I have a lot in Calabro School, which many of you know, about trees that are being suggested and planted in the school area. You need to be aware so that you could also give your input. I'm sure that the Shade Tree Commission will be reaching out to you. This was just done today, so you might not have the information yet, but I am offering it to you, being that I was at that meeting just now. I would also like to say now to the person who is retiring, felicidades, Doña Rosa Rivera, congratulations, all the best on your retirement. And I'm doing most of my remarks bilingually, because I have a question on a program that is being proposed, and I think it was tonight for the next school season, and that is a Spanish language being taught in certain schools. I don't know if the Vice Superintendent is the one who knows or not, but I just would like to ask, I mean, it's a great idea, all languages, I would assume, but if the instructors, the teachers would be able to get the school plan or the plan for the whole term in the summer, so they can review it, study it, and be better professionals at speaking whatever language it is, whether it's Spanish, Italian, French, whatever you're gonna teach the young children, because I am for it, and it would be nice to hear other languages around the building, I'm assuming. So I also would like to take a moment to ask you to please keep in mind these following things that I always come up in throughout the school year I have spoken on, and that is, you should, the school district should always keep in mind, a school bullying, it doesn't go away, it just hides, so you need to keep an eye on it. We need to have even more proactive stance on that, because, again, in the news, I don't know if you heard it, a young person took his life because of bullying. And it is a sad thing to hear. Thankfully, maybe it has not touched ours, but I have family members who are getting bullied, and it is not a fun thing for anyone, for the parents as well. And I also would like you to keep in mind any LGBTQ outreach as well, as well as school lunches, equality for all. I would hope that that would be something that you keep in mind, and when I mean you, the board, the superintendent, whoever is going to be doing the next school year, which of course, I'm sure it's on the way, it's on this agenda. So I appreciate that. And with that, I'm going to say again, congratulations to Mr. Comfort, Ms. Johnson, on their achievements. And I would also like to say thank you and congratulations to all the teachers for a wonderful school year. The teachers, the secretaries in the offices, the maintenance workers, the security, the volunteers, everyone of you for your time. I'd like to thank you for that, it is a very important thing that you do. It is some time to thank this job, I'm sure you know about it. But I also would like to, before I end, I didn't ask the question at the beginning, I didn't hear any member of the public, was there any action taken when you came in from closed session? I believe that maybe those were these 10, these were the 10.44, 10.45, 10.46. I appreciate that. And with that, again, I say thank you, God bless you, God bless Hoboken, and God bless the school district, and have a wonderful summer. Guess I'll see you in July, but enjoy. Thank you.
Okay, so next, we will be going back into executive session for the purpose of discussing...
Are you...
Oh, were you signed up? I'm sorry.
We have...
Oh, okay. Come on down.
But you know what? You just... Your reason.
Yes, your...
Your reason.
Well, new developments. New developments. Hi, Christopher Munoz, I teach at Hoboken High School, and I'm the first Vice President of the Hoboken Education Association proudly. Let me start by saying, Tom, 10 years, man. You are glutton for punishment. God bless you, you deserve an award or at least a hug from somebody, so congratulations. Dr. Johnson, I'm not surprised. As many of you know, I know my teacher here, but I have a role of doing special projects with Dr. Johnson, and this, my duties, keep me in constant communication with Dr. Johnson almost on a 24-hour basis, and so I'll ask her, I'll talk to her on a Saturday afternoon, like, where are you? She's like, my office. Okay, so Sunday night, you know, where are you? At my office? It doesn't surprise me. She is one of the hardest-working people I know, and she should be an example to the entire district, so congratulations, it was, it's amazing. My president, Roseanne Versace, stood up here smiling proudly, and I will be smiling proudly with her, because I want to commend this Board of Education for settling this You know, you understand that you cannot put students first if you put teachers last, and I really think that you should be commended for settling this and moving on to a new year with clarity and closure, so thank you for that. I would just like to educate my fellow sister union and President Waiters that the pecking order, not just a pecking order, but the order of negotiation has always been Hoboken Education Association, then the Administrators Association, and then the Hoboken Public School Employees. So us getting a contract here is in no way putting them on the back burner, or in no way are you disrespecting them, it's just the order of things, how it's always been since I've been a teacher here for 17 years. So now that we're done, I'm sure the administrators will be signing shortly, and then you will be getting to them. So I just want to say there is no malfeasance here, impropriety. You know, we are happy. If they were settling their contract tonight, I would be happy for them, so I'm sure that they're happy for us. But before I get off, I would just like to commend and pay respect to my president, Roseanne Versace. We have a contract this evening, not just because of the foresight of the Board of Education and the determination of Dr. Johnson to get it done, but also because of the fortitude and perseverance of my president. And I just want to say, she is an amazing person, it's an honor to serve under her, and she is the right person for the job. So thank you very much, thank you for the contract, and I would say enjoy your summer, but I know I will be seeing each and every one of you here this summer. So thank you very much, everyone, congratulations, and let's keep this going. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we'll be going back into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking any action, so we'll just be coming back to close the meeting. We will be approximately one hour. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second. Roll call, please. Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Grana?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluckford?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
It's not only you, it's somebody who just moved in.
Okay, it is now 10:45, and we're just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Delatorre?
Yes. Mr. Grana?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluckford?
Yes.
Ms. Menorak?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Angley?
Yes.
And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.